All right, we're down to the last two resolutions. I know nothing about them, I have nothing in front of me other than the title. So I'm gonna turn, it's Resolution 133-24 and 134-24. It's appreciation of distinguished service to Thomas Kuntz and Greg Schultz. That's all I have is what says in front of me. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chris Boosie, our city administrator.
Well, thank you, and I'm gonna hand it right back to our council vice president.
Yeah, I know nothing about this.
This is our plan. Council Vice President Rainey will be taking care of that item for you.
Thank you. Before us tonight, council is a resolution of appreciation to Thomas A. Kuntz for distinguished service as the mayor of Owatonna, Minnesota. It reads as follows. Thomas A. Kuntz served this community with distinction during the past 21 years as the mayor of the city of Owatonna, Minnesota. His years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the community. Students have been introduced to local government by conducting mock city council meetings, and DECA students encouraged to engage with city leadership. Mayor Tom led a successful campaign to allow prayer by a local clergyman prior to city council meetings. Mayor Tom's work on the economic development was impactful as he reached out to state leaders and corporate presidents to help advance a number of commercial and industrial projects forward. Construction of the new hospital and clinic, completion of the four-lane highway 14 between Owatonna and Rochester, Deikens' expansion, continued investments by Federated Insurance, construction of the new high school, and interactions with many other companies. As the mayor Tom has traveled to St. Paul to meet with lawmakers to make sure Owatonna's story is heard in the state decision-making meetings resulting in receipt of funding for projects within our community. The city council of the city of Owatonna does hereby express its sincere appreciation and thanks to Mayor Thomas A. Kuntz for his distinguished service in the community and does also highly commend his for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. The city council extends to him their best wishes for continued success in his future endeavors. And we would look for a... Questions from council? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion by Nate, is your second?
Second.
Second by Brent, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I hope not. Mayor Kuntz, congratulations.
What an honor, thank you very, very much. Yes. That was kind of exciting, I finally got to vote one time.
Our next resolution this evening is 134-24. This is a resolution of appreciation to Greg Schultz for distinguished service as city council member of the Owatonna, Minnesota city council. Whereas Greg Schultz has served this community with distinction for more than 13 years as a city council member of the city of Owatonna, Minnesota, and whereas Greg joined the city council in October 2021, was selected to serve as council vice president in January 2015, and as council president in January 2017. He has earned admiration and high regards from those with whom he has worked, and whereas the performance of his duties and responsibilities as a council member, council vice president, and council president have been characterized as excellent and constructive contributions to the community including development of the city's comprehensive plan, creation of the city's facility plan, and the airport master plan, and whereas his years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community with improvements to the downtown area and city facilities, including the Charles S. Crandall Center with the city council chambers, Merrill Hall, North Cedar Streetscape, and the Vine Street parking lot. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Owatonna does hereby express its sincere appreciation and thank you to Greg Schultz for his distinguished service to the community, and does also highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the city council and administration extends to him their best wishes for continued success in his future endeavors. Are there any questions on this resolution? That was your chance. Rebuttal here. Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve. Motion by Dan Volkey to approve.
Second.
Second by Brent Spenby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution is passed, and Mr. Schultz, congratulations.
Thank you very much, it's greatly appreciated. And I'll have a few words to say later, so, thank you.
And I will turn the meeting back to President Schultz.
Okay, well that completes our resolution. I'll move on to public comment. Anyone who's in the audience, this is your opportunity to speak. I'd ask that you approach the microphone here, state your name and address for the record. And just to let everybody know, speakers will be limited to two minutes to deliver their comments. Those speaking are asked to conduct themselves in a respectful manner as they deliver their comments. Audience members are asked to refrain from reacting to comments, and the city council will now respond directly to comments in this venue or take immediate action in response to them. So the floor is open. Anyone who wishes to speak, now is your opportunity. Come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Melissa Zimmerman, 2525 Stony Creek Drive. Speaking of where we left off last time regarding the east side corridor, page 19 of the federal document begins with the same 1990s reports we were previously told were no longer valid. Pages 20 and 22 show maps from 1993 and 1995 which were presented to the federal government as justification for how the preferred alternative was chosen. However, these maps reflect today's footprint, not the vastly different landscape of the 1990s, when subdivisions didn't exist or were still being developed. Back then, the preferred alternative was roughly 800 to 1,200 feet from residents. Page 21 continues, or contains key inaccuracies such as stating that 29th Avenue wouldn't impact native prairies, and that no preferred alternative was selected in 1995, even though the 1995 EA directly contradicts this. The report also omits critical information, for example, the Minnesota Historical Society recommended against this route in favor of one where Maple Creek Crossing had already been disrupted by a roadway, 34th Avenue. It also leaves out vital statements from the 1999 EAW. The proposed right-of-way is planned to be separated from existing residents by approximately 800 feet. Landscape boulevards and berms provide a soft absorptive surface that helps reduce the amount of noise reaching sensitive receptors. The 150-foot right-of-way anticipated for this corridor will provide adequate space. Now WSB is attempting to justify a 17-foot proximity to homes and a smaller 100-foot right-of-way by relying on inaccurate footprints and omitting key facts. This creates a very misleading picture. Let's be clear, the way noise travels hasn't changed in 30 years. Back then, 800 feet separated 150-foot right-of-way were required, but today 17 feet and 2/3 of that right-of-way are sufficient? How does this make sense? This document is filled with omissions and inaccuracies, and your names are attached to it. Are you comfortable with that? We'd like to propose a hybrid option that combines Alternative 4 for the northern section and Alternative 3 for the southern section. This option meets all project purpose and need, goals, protects residents, avoids floodplains and lines with southern farmers' preferences, and is far more fiscally responsible. Let's work towards a solution that serves everyone today and in the future. I'd also like to say thank you to President Schultz and Mayor Kuntz for all of your years of dedication and service and taking time to listen to us, two minutes at a time.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, anyone else wish to speak this evening?
Good evening, my name is Matt Sunnitt. I'm here to bring up a few things with regard to the east side corridor project, bring to your attention. The first is the visit that WSB, the engineering company that's working with the county on this project, came here to the city council recently and was talking about, well, was comparing 26th Avenue to this trunk highway that's being proposed just on the east side of town in close proximity to existing neighborhoods. And that comparison is what I would consider professional malpractice at best. To compare a road like 26th Street which existed before the homes were built next to that roadway to a new, brand-new highway, trunk highway on the east side of town that is being built in close proximity to existing homes, doesn't make any sense, and they should know better than that. I've got a government document here from U.S. Department of Transportation that says for home construction that's that close to highways, the builders should increase rigidity of materials used in construction, use brick or concrete instead of wood if possible, provide air spaces in walls, use rigid frame metal connectors on exterior walls, face windows and doors relatively away from the highway. We don't have any of these protections out on the east side of town. We can't rebuild our homes to these standards. So it's not the same, and I can't believe WSB, a supposedly reputed engineering firm, would even make those comparisons. The second is the hit piece that the county engineer has worked with, the Owatonna People's Press, misrepresenting some of the facts of our neighborhood and throwing residents under the bus, saying that we've been debunked on homes being within 15 foot of the right-of-way. It's been determined it's 17 foot, so two feet I don't think is a reason to drag residents down with that. And the third is documentation that Paul, the county engineer, gave to the federal government. I won't go into details on that, I think Ms. Zimmerman back there has already covered some of that, but fraud at worst, and that has prompted some involvement on the behalf of the state of Minnesota Department of Administration. I tell you this because I think it's important you know, and you start asking questions of the county, just to protect your good names. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak this evening? Now is your opportunity.
Matt Jessup, 303 South Elm Avenue.
And mayor-elect.
Minor detail, but it is why I'm here. I'm here to express a sincere appreciation and gratitude for Mayor Tom's example of leadership as mayor of Owatonna. Tom, your 21 years of servant leadership will undoubtedly be the standard by which all future mayors are measured. Personally, your encouragement, advice, willingness to share your information and share your experiences helped me to make my decision to run for the office. And while I'll be assuming the title that you currently hold, let's be honest, there is no replacing Mayor Tom. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Dr. Meyer.
Just gonna pile on the accolades. Good job. Hi, Brad Meyer, 2592 Mossy Creek, with the Owatonna Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to say on behalf of the chamber, board, members, and staff, thank you, Mayor Tom, and Council President Schultz, for your leadership, and both personally, for me, and for the community as a whole, we really appreciate all you've done. And I'd like to thank the rest of the council for a great year. Thanks for your work and service to the community, we really appreciate it, and to the team here at the city. I know we've talked about the decertification, and I won't belabor it, but it's pretty exciting, a lot of great things going on here, so, thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Ooh.
On behalf of...
This must be a big meeting.
Annie's coming up.
Greg, down at his last meeting after six years of asking me if I have anything to say. Annie Harmon with the People's Press, and I just want to thank Greg and Tom for making my job really easy. You guys make it easy to write about Owatonna. And Greg embraced me during my pink hair years, and that was a big moment for both of us. And Tom, I don't think my mom has ever been more proud of me than when you presented that Young Careers Store to me. She still talks about it. So, thank you, guys. I'm gonna keep bugging you, I have your numbers, I know where to find you. But again, you've made writing about Owatonna really easy, so thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, last chance. Anyone else wishes to speak? We're gonna shut her down. All right, we're gonna move to council comments. And first up tonight is Kevin.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank all of the staff, there's many department heads here tonight, for your service to the community. A lot of times, you know, we deal with some negative emails, negative phone calls, but we always stay above the fray. And so to the department heads, thank you for managing your departments, listening to community concerns, and always being extremely professional. It's very appreciated. We are one team, we are one Owatonna, to steal from the school district. And what I would ask from the department heads is, please go back and thank your staff. We can't do, we can't do what we do without a great staff and subordinate staff, and it is very, very much appreciated.
Here we go. Mr. Mayor.
When I ran for election, you kind of vetted me out. You wanted to see if I had, if I was just running on one thing, or if I had any hidden agenda. And I appreciate, I still remember that meeting. You gave me great guidance, as Mr. Jessup has said. I thought that I was prepared to be a councilman after being on the park board for 12 years, and I found out early on that while it prepared me, it didn't prepare me enough. And your kind words, your support over the years, encouraging me to take a deeper dive on Highway 14, and allowing me to grow on Highway 14 to end up being the president of the coalition, thank you for that. Thank you for nominating me to serve on the board of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Those things don't just happen without Mayor Tom and your influence and your support. 20 years, I, I don't know, Matt, you got 20 years in you? I wish you well.
I probably...
I probably won't see the 20 years, but excited for that. So, job well served. Thank you for representing Owatonna throughout the community, throughout the state, throughout the nation. It's very much appreciated. Now, Mr. Schultz.
Yep.
Didn't really know you at all. And people have asked me, well, what are you gonna miss about Greg? Tell me about Greg, and I always tell them, you know, I didn't know Greg real well when I started on the council. And what's happened since I became a council member is Greg and I have become very good friends. We don't always agree, we have great conversations, and it's, I'm gonna miss the heck out of you sitting right next to me. You're a man of reason, you're a man of integrity. Your service to the community, my gosh, he knows everyone, he's like the mayor, he knows everyone in town. And it's, it's gonna be different not having you up here, and I appreciate your service on the council, but more than that, I appreciate your friendship.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, Brent.
We can't really pass that up. I just want to say thanks to the mayor for your 21 years serving the citizens of Owatonna. I've been up here with you for 19 years, so I've been honored to sit in this diocese with you for 19 years. Great leadership, Mayor. Council President Schultz, again, thank you for your leadership on this council. I think we have grown over the years based on your leadership. And again, it's been an honor to serve in this diocese with you for the last 14 years, so good luck.
Thank you, Brent. All right, Doug. We're all gonna say something tonight. Yeah, thank you, Greg. One thing I mostly appreciated about you is you are very well-prepared, and you're very professional, and it makes these meetings so much better that way, so thank you for that. It's been an honor to have you as our president, so thank you very much. Tom, I would say this for you, you get a lot of accolades, I will just quote your favorite book, the Book of Matthew, that says, "Well done, good and faithful servant." So thank you.
Well said, Doug.
All right, Nate.
All right, well, I guess I've got about a half an hour I've prepared for ours, so settle in. No, Tom, so Tom has been the mayor my whole tenure here on the council, and I appreciate his leadership, and the thing I've always said about the mayor of Owatonna is, it's not a position for everybody. You have to have the time, the passion, the willingness to go out and really be a cheerleader for the city of Owatonna. And Tom has been that since I've been on the council, and so you've got big shoes to fill, and I appreciate all the work you've done on behalf of the city over the years, like everybody said. Everybody knows him, he's well-liked, well-known, and effective in his role. So he will be missed, so thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Greg, and I've been on the council, he got on shortly after I did, so I appreciate the leadership he's provided as well. He's a very reasonable man, and it's been easy to be on this council with him at the helm, and appreciate all the hard work he's done, because lord knows, I wouldn't want to be in that seat, because he's had to deal with some things I'm happy I didn't have to. So, thank you for your service, and good luck in the future to both of you.
Thank you, thank you, Nate. Hi, Dave.
Well, it's gonna be a culture change, seeing Tom out and about and not calling him Mayor Tom. So thank you for your service. And Greg, the same way, we didn't know each other very well when you came on, got to know you a little bit more. You're a squared-away guy, and I'm honored to have served with you. Thank you.
And Dan.
Well, there's been enough smoke blown around here, so I'm not gonna go there. But I would like to wish everyone happy holidays and a very merry and blessed Christmas.
Well said. All right, Mayor.
Well, I'm a privilege and honor to serve the citizens of Owatonna for 20 years. It's just a great community, there's not a community like this. It's the staff that we have on our, for the city of Owatonna, it's the council, it's everything that goes along with it and makes Owatonna a great, great place. I'm a hometown boy, I was born and raised here, and graduated in '63, and we were about 13,000. We're about 27-plus now, so Owatonna continues to grow, and it only continues to grow because of hard work from all the staff and all the members out there. It's been a joy, joy, joy representing Owatonna, and I'm very comfortable with my replacement coming on board, he's gonna do a great job. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chris?
Well, it has been an honor and a privilege to work for you both, Mayor Tom and Council President Schultz. I think the highest compliment I can give you is that you have left Owatonna better than when you came. And I sincerely appreciate all your support over the years, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Okay, down to me now. Now, I don't get to talk very often up here, so. I have a couple of thank yous I'd really like to say. First is to the second ward constituents of mine. They have overwhelmingly supported me through the years and the elections, and it's hard to describe, everybody up here knows, but it's a very humbling experience, and it meant a lot to me. Also, to all the city residents, you know, just because we represent a ward, doesn't mean we don't talk with all the other citizens in the community and deal with them, and we love doing that. And they've always been very positive and encouraging towards me, and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart for all that. As Tom said, we're hometown boys, so it means a lot. Now, speaking of Mayor Tom, and City Attorney Mark Walbren. You might not know, I didn't get on the council originally by being elected, I was appointed, and when that vacancy occurred, my phone started ringing, and I actually got a visit from the mayor and Mark that they insisted that I run for this office, file for this office, and they were very persistent, and so you two are the ones who got me here, started in here, so, but thank you for that. It's been a very great experience for me. To the city employees, thank you. You are all very dedicated, and you're very proud of this city, and that really shows. It means a lot. And then there's the department heads. Some of them might be glad I'm leaving. I sometimes expected lots of things out of them that maybe they didn't want to give me, but they did, and we were all better off for that, so a great, big thank you to the department heads. Chris, I talked about you earlier tonight, but Chris and I, we've only two been together, we don't know anybody else, so we discussed lots of things, we didn't always agree, we fought it out, and because of that, we got better decisions, and that's a very important thing. To disagree with everybody isn't the right thing to do, and I've always respected you, and I know it's been mutual, and that means a lot. Speaking of mutual respect, I want to thank all the city council members. We didn't always agree, we would vote, and whatever the decision was, that was it, and we moved on to the next thing. And that really means a lot. Sorry, I get emotional. But I can't be remiss and not remember Raymond Trulson and Jeff Okaburk, because if you don't know, they both died while they were in office. Well, all of us were here at that time, and Raymond was, they both had giant hearts. Their hearts were bigger than them, and their passion for the city was truly amazing. One of the hardest things I did was give the eulogy for the city council at Jeff Okaburk's funeral, and that was very moving for me. Kevin got elected, for whatever reason, they decided he needed a mentor, and I was assigned. And, excuse me, mainly because my nephew and Kevin's son played basketball together, and as I recall, that was a pretty good team, yes. So I was the one that knew who Kevin was, and Kevin has lots of ideas, which is awesome, he brings a lot to the table here, it's truly amazing. And those, you know, Kevin and I, we talk just about every day. He's been a, when he was elected, I was president, Kevin was elected vice president, and he embraced that job, and I think we worked well together, and by working together, we've come up with some interesting ideas, some good ones, some bad ones, but overall, I think we moved the city forward. And Kevin, you've gone beyond being a council member, you're truly our friend of mine, so thank you.
Thank you.
And last, I have to thank my wife. She's put up a lot with me over the years. We've been married almost 45 years, and she's always taken a second seat to the things I do, and now is the time for her to have some of my time, and I plan on taking good care of her, so I'm gonna say thank you to her, and thank you to all of you, so that's I talked a little bit earlier about you don't take this job if you don't have a lot of passion, and I think we all have that. So, the next part of the meeting, I'm a little bit concerned about. Those of you that have followed our meetings, this particular council likes to play games with me during the adjournment process, and so I have no idea quite what to expect this evening, but I'm gonna go out on a limb and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Brent. That was very easy, thank you. Now the harder part.
Second.
They just want to get out of here.
Second.
We got a second, and thank you, I'm sure there's no discussion tonight, so all those in favor of adjournment signify... those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
President, could you ask for those opposed?
Those opposed.
Aye.
Okay, I'm not gonna listen to you.
So, if I could explain. This is our final thank you to Greg. We're not ready for him to leave. So we're gonna take one last time to give you another minute as a council member, as a president. Thank you. With that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done. Thank you.